Welcome, everybody, to the League of Women Voters' Primary Candidate Forum for Clover Park School Directors for District 3 and 4. I am Lydia Zepeda, the moderator, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and our community sponsors, I welcome the candidates and the audience to this community candidate forum. The League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County acknowledges that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish peoples, surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Tacoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and current realities. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 100 years has been to empower informed and active participation of citizens in government. Candidate forums are one of the many ways that we do this. Anyone who is 16 years or older can be a member of the League of Women Voters. For more information on membership, go to our website, That's www.tocomapierce.lvw.org. The candidates in ballot order for District 3 are Alyssa Anderson Pearson, Darwin Peters II, and Jeff Brown. And for District 4, they are Ari J. Hamm, Marty Schaefer, Andrea Caldwell, and David G. Anderson. Andrea Caldwell did not respond to multiple requests to participate. This year's primary election is on August 3rd. You should have received your ballot if you are a registered voter. Your ballot must be postmarked or placed in a ballot drop box by 8:00 PM August 3rd. Any race with fewer than three candidates will not be on the primary ballot, as those candidates will automatically proceed to the general election on November 2nd. This forum is being recorded and will be posted at our website, again, Questions have been prepared by members of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and our cosponsoring organizations. We invite live audience questions via text to That's 253-948-6029. Text your questions to that number. Questions must be directed to all candidates, and they may be reworded or consolidated. Our timekeeper today is Teri Baker of the League of Women Voters. She will hold up cards to let candidates know that they have 60 seconds remaining, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and when it is time to stop. When you see the stop card, the red stop card, you may finish a short sentence, but you need to stop. I will make you stop. Please stay on gallery view so that you can see me and the timekeeper, Teri Baker. Please do not talk unless it's your turn, and please mute yourself when it's not your turn to speak. The audience is on mute and cannot use the chat function. A reminder that civility is expected. I ask you each to confirm that you agree to our ground rules, which, among other things, includes addressing the issues and not making personal attacks. Could I please get a thumbs up from everybody that you agree to these ground rules? Thank you very much. Okay. Each candidate has up to two minutes for an opening statement. After that, the order of the questions will rotate, and each candidate will be asked the same question. At the end, each candidate can make a one-minute closing statement. The order of the two-minute statements is in ballot order. It does look like two of our candidates who confirmed that they would be here are not here. I will say to them, if you are in the audience, you clicked on the wrong link. You should click on the, you should go back to your email and look for the link that is an invitation to be part of the actual forum. Okay, so in ballot order, the two-minute statements will be Alyssa Anderson Pearson first, then Darwin Peters II, and then Jeff Brown, and then David G. Anderson. So we'll start with Alyssa. Two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, I'm Alyssa Anderson Pearson, and I'm running for reelection to the Clover Park School Board. I've been honored to serve on the board for the past four years. When I first ran for election, I ran for one reason, to give back to the community I grew up in and love in an area I'm passionate about, education. I knew I could make a difference and contribute to student success. I am the daughter of a career public school teacher. The importance of education was ingrained into me. I was always told you can lose everything, but no one can take your education away. During my time on the board, we have implemented sound fiscal policies, which served us well during the COVID-19 pandemic. We issued laptops for remote learning and provided Wi-Fi access points to those in need. At the same time, we completed construction of our state-of-the-art Thomas Middle School without additional borrowing. We have improved communication to all our stakeholders, which in turn has improved public transparency. We have won awards for our communication efforts. We also strengthened our relationship with the city council. The pandemic has resulted in the unavailability of normal measurable outcomes. The last available statistics, including standardized test results, are from the 2018-19 school year. More than two years ago, student success is more than just test scores. Yes, they are extremely important, and I will continue to push to improve performance. However, the definition of success varies by individual. As a board, we implemented the four pillars of student success, which focus on the individual as a whole, and ensuring that our students are well-rounded and set up for lifelong success. I hope you see that my heart is in this for the right reasons. I am currently the only board member with young children. I also work full-time. I can directly relate to parents and staff in the district who juggle the demands of the 21st century lifestyle. That perspective is a valuable addition to the boardroom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Darwin Peters II.
Hello, and thank you, guys, for allowing me the opportunity to join and speak with you guys today. My name is Darwin Peters II, and I too am running for position of Clover Park School District Director for District 3. I'm a little bit about myself. I've been married to my wife for 12 years. Together, we have six amazing kids. Four of those children currently attend school in Clover Park School District. I myself am also Clover Park School District alumni. I attended elementary school at Hartwood Elementary, middle school at Woodbridge Middle School, and high school at Clover Park High School. Also, it's safe to say that I am fully invested in our district and seeing it continue to grow. After the Army, after I mean, after I joined, left high school, I joined the Army, where I learned what selfless service really looks like. I also learned how to work together with the team collaboratively and how to do so in any environment. After I left the Army, I decided to take my talents, take my abilities and my gifts and everything that I've learned, and dedicate that to working for children, working with children. Right, and that's one of the reasons that I am running today. I'm running for our children. Clover Park School District currently serves about 12,000 students, and each one of those young minds has a gift. I believe that as leaders, it is our responsibility to figure out how to make sure that no student slips through the cracks. But instead, we need to figure out how to cultivate each one of those young minds, so that they're nurtured, given room to grow, and that they're where they are to help catapult them to their success. This is something that I cannot do without you guys. So for me, collaboration is of the utmost importance. If I'm elected to Clover Park School Board, one of the main things that I plan on doing is restoring and rebuilding that relationship between the school board and our students, teachers, and parents. I want to be a voice for our special needs students that are not always heard, and ultimately be a voice and a representation for every student in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Brown, next, please.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Brown, and I would first of all like to acknowledge Alyssa and Darwin for what they said. I don't disagree with anything they said. I think it's great. A little about me, I've lived in Lakewood for over 35 years. I practice architecture here as an architect for over 40 years. Have served on the Lakewood Planning Advisory Board, the Pierce County Planning Commission, eight years, and numerous other boards in Pierce County. And that distinguished me a little bit, not better or worse, but just, I just have some life experiences in the community that are fairly broad, and I believe those will bring a lot to participation on the board. A little bit more about me. I've been married for 44 years. I've raised three kids in Lakewood. Two of them are graduates of Lakes High School. I am the son of, second of seven in my family, so from a large family. I'm the grandfather of seven grandkids, soon to be eight. I'm a candidate for Clover Park Schools because I believe all families in Lakewood need the local school board to represent them. I need, by listening, learning, acting upon what they need in our school system. I'm a candidate who believes that Clover Park Schools should be governed by a local board with minimal dependence on the direction from state and federal governments, that we are a local board. I'm a candidate that believes that Clover Park Schools is chartered to impart the fundamental education to our children, preparing them with the life skills of reading, writing, mathematics, and physical science. I'm a candidate who believes that Clover Park Schools should reflect and reinforce the familial values of love, respect, integrity, and positive self-esteem. I'm a candidate who believes in the outcomes of our educational system should include the ability to speak, write, listen, understand, analyze, innovate, communicate, and debate. I'm a candidate who believes in the protection of our school board from special interest narratives, which would distract from fundamental education. And I'm a candidate, okay.
Next, David G. Anderson.
Thank you for having me on this forum today. My name is David Anderson. I'm running for District 4, Clover Park School District. I've been married for 49 years. This job last July 22nd. We have four grandchildren, all in the area, and five grandchildren that attend Clover Park Schools. I've been the Neighborhood Association President of Telecombe Woodburn Neighborhood Association for the last 15 years, and I would love nothing better than to demonstrate that the revitalization model for rebuilding a community, whether it's a neighborhood, association, or the institution of education, still works. And that is one individual at a time, each of whom has a skill, gift, talent, or ability. And when recognized and encouraged and supported, those individuals can become academically and occupationally that which they are gifted. I attended Telecombe Elementary School, Woodburn Middle School, Lakes High School, attended Northwest Baptist Seminary, where I graduated in 1987. I've been a pastor on Woodby Island and several interim pastors. I have three planks on my platform. The A for the ABCs stands for Iowa Advocate for listing sessions between board director and the people of the community. To that end, I've been on 2,583 doorsteps, listing to the people of our community. I will bring to the board the B, best practices from great schools across America. There's no reason Clover Park School District can't be one of the best districts in America. And the C, I will challenge the status quo. Every single board meeting must be characterized by informed debate, by which we discuss the only reason we're elected, to have students academically succeed in post-secondary life.
Thank you. Thank you all. Now we come to the questions. Each candidate gets up to 90 seconds to answer each question. For some questions, I will indicate you only have 60 seconds. Again, the live audience can text questions to 253-948-6029. That's 253-948-6029. It appears that two of the candidates who confirmed will not be with us, Ari J. Hamm and Marty Schaefer, should they join us in the middle, I will try to involve them in the rotation, but we will go ahead and proceed. So the first question, we will, and we'll rotate with each question. The first question, we'll start with Darwin. And the question is, the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction, OSPI, Statistics for Clover Park School District were worse than the state average in English, math, and science. Less than 51% were at grade level in English, less than 39% in math, and less than 40% in science. The question is, what is your plan to improve achievement in the Clover Park School District, particularly in science and math? Again, what is your plan to improve achievement in the Clover Park School District, particularly in science and math? Darwin, please.
Yes, thank you, Lydia. That's a great question, and I think, I think the first thing that we have to do is really get down to the why. With Clover Park School District, we have a number of students that come from various backgrounds. One of the largest groups being our military dependents. About 30% of our students are military students. And we have a larger number of students that just do not have, I believe, adequate resources to properly, not just receive, it's not a matter of what they're receiving in the classroom, but their ability to also study and get the help that they need outside of the class. Right? And so one of the things that I believe that we have to do is implement more programs that allow more after-school opportunities for these students to get the help that they get, that they need outside of the traditional school hours. And I think that that's going to be crucial. I think one of the things that this pandemic showed is that our students simply don't have those resources outside of, outside of the school. And so we need to come up with a plan and figure out how we're going to do that and offer those students those opportunities and make sure that they know about them and that they're getting plugged in with them. And I think that that would go a long way with helping students comprehend the way that they need the comprehension, so that we do see those reflections in our test scores.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question, and it's something, the very first thing that I would do is, can I make sure, is to make sure that we tap the resources that we have, which happens to be the school administration itself, teachers, principals, and really understand what their perspective is on what is missing in achievement of these things. So I can't say, as a person that's not been on the board and having immersed what that would be exactly, but I would be in a place where, as a board member, I would seek to listen to what it is that's going on. Secondly, just to break that down a little further, I think it's important to understand, maybe from another angle or maybe through these same individuals, which students, you know, and I think Darwin mentioned, people that don't have means or just, or just don't have the resources to engage in these disciplines. But to really find out which students there are that really need to have the assistance that they need to gain success in the performances that they need to be in. So basically, it's doing, it's listening, it's engaging with parents, it's engaging with the administration and staff, and it's putting together a plan that brings us up. And I think that's been done many times. As a board member, I would, I would seek to find maybe a new path to understand and to execute in accomplishing this. Thank you.
David?
Yes, the wheel has been invented. Greatschools.org tracks the great schools in America, school districts, schools themselves, on what constitutes academic excellence. So if kids are failing in math, behind in English or science, here are five steps that they recommend. Support, first of all, in college counselors during the high school years. Quote, "Students who receive personalized guidance from a high school-based college counselor, including help filling out applications and providing financial aid resources, are more likely to enroll in a four-year college." Two, provide widely available, widely variable, robust, advanced academics without minimum GPA, teacher recommendation, or any other obstacle to access these classes, and do that in ever-lowered grades. Three, provide extra support, one-on-one tutoring, after-day school mentoring, and tracking of all students to not only prevent academic failure, but to achieve academic excellence. Four, expect and encourage and support high expectations for all students. More than five decades of research show that teacher expectations profoundly affect student outcomes. And five, a college for all philosophy does not work. Schools must have a robust vocational program to which all students have access.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Thank you. So as I had mentioned in my opening statement, the statistics that we're going off of are from the 2018-19 school year. Since the pandemic, I've uprooted everything the past year and a half. And so since that time, we actually have hired a new superintendent. So that is a new path for the district, and I believe that he is doing a wonderful job, and I have, he has all students in mind, and I have no doubt he is going to point our district in the right direction and continue to move it forward. Due to the pandemic, we are already starting the learning recovery. This is extremely important because we know that students who are learning at home is not the same as in the classroom. So we already have summer programs. We're focused on social and emotional learning, mental health. I think all of these things help and help each student become better. And when you feel, you know, when your mental health is better and your social or emotional learning, you tend to do better in the classroom. We have a very diverse community, and everyone has a different background, and everyone's dealing with their own internal issues. And so it's important that everyone feels supported. And I think if each student feels supported, they'll perform better in the classroom and on standardized testing.
Thank you. The next question will be 60 seconds, and we will start with Jeff. You'll get a 30, 15-second warning. So the next question, 60 seconds. OSPI statistics indicate that fewer than 40% of kindergarteners in the Clover Park School District are already in six areas of development and learning. And that's lower than the state average. And the question is, what is your plan to improve early learning readiness? What is your plan to improve early learning readiness? Jeff?
Well, thank you. That's a great question. I am not aware of Clover Park's program for early learning. Again, as a board member and someone that's getting into the business, if you will, of education, I would really seek to understand from our administration, from our teachers and staff, you know, what it is that's holding these kids back from achieving what they need to have. I would presume that it's, again, I'm going to guess, it just has to do with perhaps resources for the kids and what they need, or maybe it's kind of the pre-education ahead of the program that we're talking about.
Thank you. David?
Early learning readiness so much depends upon community asset mapping. That is where we partner as a school district with agencies outside the school district that specialize in helping kids prepare for school. So places like the YMCA, parenting classes, agencies that have in-house care for children, helping them learn to read phonics. The support of parents in the education of their children must be paramount. And so the early learning component of helping kids get ready for school depends upon the primary educator of those children, and that is the parent. So anything that we can do in partnering with outside agencies by which to help these kids be prepared for the educational learning environment is critical.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Thank you. So obviously, when you go into kindergarten or every, kindergarten, everyone's level of knowledge is different, because prior to that point, it was either the parents or, you know, daycare or preschool. Every student's learning path up to that point has been different. So we really need more opportunities for early learners. You know, you only get so much funding from the state. It would be nice to expand those programs and additionally, make community members and parents aware of all the programs that are available. They may not even be aware that their child qualifies for early learning programs. So they just, we need to get the word out and let parents know what is available and what partnerships we have to help their child be ready for kindergarten.
Thank you. Darwin?
Yes, I, so in regards to this question, I think a lot of it comes down to, it's going to come down to opportunities outside of the classroom. And I think it's by way of bridging partnerships within our community. We have organizations such as the YMCA and Boys and Girls Club that have programs that can help us assist with both things. So I think a part of it is making those resources not just available because they are here, but more accessible to all of our parents. And that means coming up with ways to bridge transportation needs, to bridge funding and finances for families to be able to access those resources, or possibly finding ways to bring those resources to where these kids are, and figuring out how to get those to those, get those opportunities to the students and the parents so that they can learn how to, just help their kindergartner meet the requirements that they need to be proficient and ready to move on to the first grade.
Thank you. Okay. The next question is 90 seconds, and we'll be starting with David, and then Alyssa, then Darwin, and then Jeff. So this question is, what are your proposals to address the lost learning due to the pandemic? What are your proposals to address the lost learning due to the pandemic? And we'll start with David.
Lost learning through the pandemic has resulted in remote opportunities for children that has caused some school districts to adopt an ongoing online learning program. So remote academic institutions, in addition to in-class sessions, are one option. Tutoring, mentoring, and online specialized makeup, both summer school and even in classroom, by putting kids who are deficient in being at grade level, but receiving that specialized attention within the classroom is one very important means by which to address deficiencies through the pandemic. But returning kids to the classroom ideally is critical because sometimes I think more important than the material that they receive online is the camaraderie they have with their classmates and the relationship they build with their teacher.
Thank you. Alyssa, what are your proposals to address the lost learning due to the pandemic?
So we have already started our plan and path forward for lost learning. So it's a focus on the next two to three years. I had briefly mentioned it before. So we currently have summer programs and opportunities for students, learning material. And that will also go on. And next summer, we'll also have more support during school year, outside of classroom time, also social, the social and emotional learning piece, and mental health to help students transition back into the classroom. The start is going back into the classroom full-time, which we plan to do. Come September, we're very excited to be full-time. And then those students who don't, whose parents don't feel comfortable with sending them to school in person, we actually partnered with an online program. Some company that actually specializes in online schooling. We were thrown into it at the start of the pandemic. We were not online teaching experts at that point, and I wouldn't say that we're experts at this point. So it's nice that we have a partnership, and we're just going to really focus on this student as a whole moving forward for the next two to three years and beyond if needed.
Thank you. Darwin?
Yes, I think for this, the first thing we have to do is focus on our students' social and mental health. First and foremost, there can be absolutely no learning until we take care of that part, or at least no effective learning. And then I think we need to look at reestablishing, right, those social and learning norms within the classroom. It's going to be very different for these students, being back in class full-time all year round. It's going to look different, it's going to feel different, even for those students that were doing hybrid learning. Understanding that it's going to be an ongoing process, I think Alyssa just said, focusing on the next two to three years, right, which is perfect. We need to understand that this is an ongoing process. It's not going to change overnight. It's not going to be something that happens within the first semester of this next school year. And then I think we need to hear from our students, right? We need to get their voice and understand what it is that they need, because every student... We need to get their voice and understand what it is that they need because every student did not miss the same opportunities. Um, and every student is not going to need the same thing. There's no one-size-fits-all for this. So we need to figure it out and make sure that the plan that's set in place right now is actually going to be a plan that works for all of our students. Um, and then we need to make sure that we're extending opportunities outside of the school. We need to leverage those community partnerships, and if we don't have them, then we have to build those community partnerships so that we're coming together um as a community to help all of our students meet the needs that they, that they have to have um to be able to succeed as they progress throughout the school years, the next couple of school years.
Thank you. Jeff? You're on mute.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I, I, the first thing that I would do is I would uh go right to the teachers. I've said this before in other ways, but the teachers are the front line of educating our kids. And I would merely ask them, what is this that they need? Uh, you know, how can we assist them in bringing their students up to a place where they need to be? The first step might be, you know, uh assessment. And um, second can be just what, what physical needs, what, what material needs, whatever it is that you need to help with this. And then a third might be possibly volunteer tutors or something that could help the teacher engage with those students as they progress throughout the year to catch up uh with what they've lost. The second would be parental assistance, seeing what we could do to help the parents because a lot of the time the kids are at home and parents can actually help. I know that's a challenge because we have students from different kinds of parental familial backgrounds, and that's often times what causes the disparity of learning with kids. So um really reaching out to find out how we can connect with parents um to help. A third, after school programs, I've heard that before uh from the other candidates, but it's, it's true. Um, the, the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA's, the, the, the different groups that really can help out. Um, and finally, just a tutoring program, uh hopefully that would require funding, but maybe it's a volunteer program that could help the kids get a little bit further. Um, and one last one would be grandparents. If kids have that depth of, of family in the area, that would be helpful. Or um, anyway, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be sixty seconds and we will start with uh David and then Alyssa, then Darwin, then Jeff. Um. Did we do that? Oh, we already did that order. Um, no, we'll start with Alyssa. Sorry. We'll start with Alyssa um and then Da- then Darwin, then Jeff, then David. Sorry. My rotation is out of sync. So this will be a sixty-second question. How will you encourage civic education, student engagement in government, and voter registration for high school students? This is sixty seconds. How will you encourage civic education, student engagement in government, and voter registration and hi- um for high school students? And we'll start with Alyssa.
I think it's crucial that our eighteen-year-olds are, are signed to vote and, you know, uh, those younger are prepared to sign up to vote. I believe in teaching um civic history accurately. I believe teaching both sides is important. I think that if, you know, if you um mention one ish issue, teachers should teach it so both sides of that are spoken in the classroom. Uh, it's also important that we teach students why it's important to vote, how their vote matters and counts. Um, and just continue that education through. But I don't think it's a teacher's responsibility to tell students which way they should vote, which way they should think. That's for the student to determine on their own.
Thank you. Darwin?
I think uh one of the best things to do, right, is to be, be an example to the students as elected officials, right? And so that, that means meeting them and, and talking to them and expressing to them why it is important, not just at uh the, the higher elections, like the presidential election and so on and so forth, but even all the way down to seeing those local officials, right? I think we should get local officials in the schools, talking to them about the importance of the elections and how, how the roles that our local officials uh positions that they sit in, how they affect our students' day-to-day life, right? It should absolutely be a nonpartisan effort where nobody's pitching sides or any agendas or anything like that, but just explain, explaining the positions to the students, right? And that shouldn't just be put on our teachers. That should be put on every everybody, like I said, especially us as elected officials or candidates to go and explain that.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you. Um, that's a great topic. Um, civics education, government voting. Um, I think um the most important thing, and I'll just jump onto what Alyssa said. Basically, it's um teaching kids to, to think critically and to um hear both sides. Uh, I believe it's important for kids, for children and students to understand that it's okay to have opposing or different opinions, different, different ways. I think of structuring um a program where, where, you know, I remember when I was in high school, we were instructed to um kind of take a side, and you wouldn't even know which side you wanted to be on. You'd have to just research it and then report in, and that was a really good exercise um for us at the time. I believe that um kids should, in the history, in the form of history, should learn about his, the history itself of our country, about our form of governance and how it works, the Electoral College, the popular vote system. And um, those are all very important. And then how to register and how to actually participate in, in having a voice in our community.
Thank you. David? You're on mute. You're on mute.
Okay, thank you. Do you, do I think it's important to encourage civics education, student engagement in government, and voter registration for high school students? Absolutely. Preparing young people to responsibly take their place in society and to sex successfully meet the challenges of post-secondary life should entail the study of political and practical aspects of citizenship as well as its rights and duties. It is the paramount job of a school board director to, at every single board meeting, ask the question, how are we preparing our students to meet the post-secondary challenges of life? Civic responsibility is a key component of preparing our students.
Thank you. The next question is ninety seconds. And we will start with um Darwin, then Jeff, then David, then Alyssa. And the question is, how would you approach adoption of a curriculum to ensure that it, it includes accurate information about racism in American history? How would you approach the adoption of a curriculum to ensure that it includes accurate information about racism in American history? Darwin?
Um, I think that it is important to approach that entire scope of education uh from a very open and honest perspective, right? Pishing all personal agendas and all personal phones aside. Um, I think the beautiful thing about history is that it allows you to, to see both the good and the bad. And so I think that we have to be transparent and honest with ourselves when we're approaching a curriculum, any curriculum um that's involving history and teaching our students anything that's gone on um in the past or current and going on. Um, and that means that we have to be diligent in going through that curriculum with a fine-toothed tone um and making sure that it is free from any uh personal agendas, any personal opinions, and that it's strictly fact-based. Um, we shouldn't be talking about the things that happened as we know that they happened, not the things that happened the way that we think they were meant to be, um or the way that we perceive them to be now. And we just have to be honest with ourselves when we're looking at those things, and we have to be open. We have to be able to work together collaboratively. The board consists of five people um with all differing views, different opinions and different feelings. And then not only do we have to look at this board, but we have to bring our teachers and our parents into the conversation. And we have to let them know or let them be able to see what it is that we're looking at and what we're viewing, especially our teachers that are going to be the ones that actually have to present this material to our students. And so I think it's important that we make sure that we don't do this individually, and we don't do it just solid as a board, but that we do it collectively as a community uh being board members, teachers and parents.
Thank you. Jeff? You're on mute.
That's a very good question about um how do we adopt um a curriculum um that deals with, with, you know, the history and interracial issues of our, of our, of our country. The, the first thing that I would have to say with that is that, that we're, we're all about the truth and, and basically understanding what that is. And it's fairly, it's not easy, but it, and it takes work, but really looking at several different sizes of any particular issue that may have be of controversy. So it's, it's um, this is being open-minded and it's uh being um, having an atmosphere of really being able to, to talk and to talk safely and to agree to disagree and maybe um, maybe move on from something if it's not germane to, or it can't be resolved. The other thing is, is to have a um so, uh programmer, or the, the outcome would be to unify and not divide. That we're not here to blame anybody, blame any race. We're here to, to basically say, here we are as a group of people in the United States of America, and we, we, we care about each other, we care about our history, and we're about how do we, how do we go forward as one people, as one united people um as, as citizens. Um, and then that's basically, we want to um again, treat each into, each person as an individual and not as a part of a group. Um, and, and again, saying if so, as a whole, that would be it.
Thank you. Um, David?
Uh, those who fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it. Uh, so history, the good, the bad and the ugly, the factual presentation of actual historians uh is very important without political agenda. And there's a great danger there, uh as we've seen, I believe, already from OSPI indicating that there's a more uh mission creep from the current uh equity journey the Clover Park School District is on into very possibly a political activism mentality. And I wrote an article entitled, is it education or political activism? And that can be found in my website and on the Suburban Times, our local online newspaper. The adoption of any curriculum, any curriculum must be accurate. It must be intelligently debated. It must be evidence-based. Uh, to leave no stone unturned is important, peering behind the facades, uh lifting the curtain to make sure that we're not being led down a trail that um is not emphasizing the individual over some alleged group membership uh that others have assessed they belong to. Uh, there is a great danger down that path, but history, the good, the bad and ugly, absolutely.
Thank you. Alyssa?
I um believe it's critical to have curriculum that um has the accurate history and that is not political. It truly needs to be accurate. And in order to do so, um during the adoption process, I know the Clover Park School District are, they have a team that digs into the curriculum that comes forward with a proposal on what to adopt. It would be important to have diverse voices on the team analyzing the curriculum. And then also for this specific um topic, I do think community input is critical. And all of those things take place before the board adopts um the curriculum. So it really is important that we do the work upfront, that it's not a quick adoption, but that it does have accurate history, even if it's the ugly history that people may not necessarily want to discuss. It's important that our students know um what has happened and um.
Thank you. Um, the next question will be sixty seconds and we'll start with Jeff, then David, then Alyssa, then Darwin. Um, and the sixty-second question um has to do with reopening of schools. Um, what steps would you take to address incidents of bullying and to prevent bullying in school? So what steps would you take to address incidents of bullying and to prevent bullying in, in schools? Um, we'll start with Jeff. You're on mute. Sixty seconds.
Okay. I'd love to find out more about it. I, I, I haven't been in that school system for a long time. I, my kids went through the high school and I'm aware of some instances of bullying and, and, and behaviors that intimidate others. Um, I believe there needs to be, first of all, um, a policy that, that allows kids to safely report bullying. And um, there would be a way for um there, there'd be a way for kids to, to um to, you know, to be protected, if you will, from bullying. And so that means repercussions for what actually happens from one individual to another. Um, I believe it should be um done in such a way that, that um both, both parties aren't punished, but maybe um there's enough research done to determine, you know, you know, what's, what's an issue that needs to be disciplined with one person versus the other. I, I know my wife is, has been a principal for a number of years, and I've heard of instances where, where you get two kids that have, that have been in an altercation, and both of them get punished for the same thing, even though there was only one uh person that was causing the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Already, there are protocols in public school for dealing with bullying. And, and the real question here is, anything, absolutely anything that disrupts the classroom because the main job of the teacher is teaching um should be handled immediately, promptly and with follow-up uh severely as, as needed. And then, of course, the um institution, the addition, uh the re, re, um return of um public safety officers to Clover Park School District, I think was a good step to uh prevent the distraction and the disruption of the classroom. Everything we do must keep the teacher in mind for the job that they were uh went to college to do. Anything that takes time and attention and focus and resources directed away from that core mission must be dealt with first taste.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Um, bullying is an issue that I a lot of individuals need to be involved in to correct. Not only the teachers, not only the administration of schools, but also parents. Cyber bullying is a huge part of children's life currently. And I, it needs to start when we're young. I need to teach my two young children that being keyboard wor- warriors and being rude to others is not appropriate and not accepted. And it really is a team effort. And in, social media makes it so difficult for schools in bullying because a lot of times the bullying takes place outside of the classroom, but then it is brought into the classroom. So I do think it starts with education. And it also is important that parents model that behavior because a lot of adults are online making comments uh that are rude and probably nothing that they want their children to read either. So it really is a combined effort and students need, need to be disciplined and corrected when bullying occurs.
Thank you. Darwin?
Yes, I think first we have to set clear definitions for what bullying is. It needs to be clear, it needs to be upfront, and we need to make sure that it's something that students can completely understand. Um, and then we have to set rules, right? And uh, and in realistic, enforceable rules and expectations. Um, ones that make it easy for our teachers and administrators to be able to follow, but also ones that make it very clear in fact for our students and parents, parents, on what's going to happen. There has to be a zero tolerance for bullying. Um, we have to make sure that we're opening up communication lines and that we're engaging our parents, um but also within the schools, we have to make sure that our students have safe spaces that they feel that they can go. Um, safe people that they feel that they can talk to when bullying happens. A lot of times, students suffer in silence because they don't feel like they could come to anybody. So we have to make sure that we create those spaces and that we're able to get help, not just for the victim, but also for the child that's being bullied or that's doing the bullying. Because a lot of times we know that those are happening as a result of something else. So we need to make sure that we're doing all that we can to that.
Thank you. Um, the next question is ninety seconds. And um we'll be starting with David, then Alyssa, then Darwin, and then Jeff. And OSPI statistics for the Clover Park um school district indicate that the most vulnerable um and lowest achieving learners are English language learners, kids in foster care, homeless kids, and kids with disabilities. Um, these are the most vulnerable and lowest achieving learners in the school district. Um these are the most vulnerable and lowest achieving learners in the school district. What programs and supports do you propose to help them? English language learners, kids in foster care, homeless kids and kids with disabilities to help them achieve academically? We'll start with David. You're on mute. Still on mute. There you go.
Okay, yeah, okay, super. Uh demography should not determine destiny. Uh again, through our community asset mapping, there is um organizations that exist purposely to address the issues of homelessness, immigrants, refugees, non-English speaking students. And they are under our purview as school board directors, administrators and teachers. Therefore, they should be treated as the individuals they are incorporated as often as possible uh through outreach and support of these CAM, Community Asset Mapping Groups that we partner with so that they have opportunity to be tracked, be members, to be included with their peers, that they have equal access to academics, uh that we find them and that we bring them uh so that they can too have the math and science classes, parental support, after school activities, all made available to them also. As they are no different, they are students and they are individuals under our care so that they have a sense of belonging and that they can achieve all that they can be while in our school system.
Thank you, Alyssa.
All right, so it's no secret that the past year and a half has been especially difficult for the groups that you just uh mentioned. Um one thing that we've done with English, the English language learner um families is we actually have expanded our translator services. We noticed that parents weren't coming forward and and being involved, they weren't being involved in their students' learning because they couldn't communicate. And when there's no two-way communication, they're more likely to not show up. So we ensure that our translating services are available and students know about those. We want them to feel welcomed. Um and you you know, feel like they can come to the school for whatever their needs are. And for students who are homeless or low income, they need to feel supported and connected. We have a lot of community partnerships that we want to make them uh we want to make sure that they know about these. Our superintendent is doing a wonderful job expanding our partnerships. He's out in the community connecting um connecting with different organizations and I know that students will benefit benefit from those. And we also need to ensure that um the funding for special education is um appropriate and it covers our needs. We have a lot of special needs students. Um and we just need to ensure that the funding matches what we need so they can also get the education that they deserve.
Thank you, Darwin.
Yes, I think that it is um extremely important that we are looking at community partnerships and relationships for all four of these categories. Uh translators is is a huge portion of our English language learners, not just within the classroom, but also outside of the classroom. Making sure that they have accessibility to those services so that they're able to uh like Alyssa said, participate in their children's education and be a partner in that. Uh children in foster care, same thing, is make sure that that we're using these partnerships that we have with the ability to have partnerships outside in the community, perfectly examples, like what Y M C A actually gives free Y M C A memberships for our children that are in foster care. And that leads them to a ton of other resources, right? So it's not just um it's making sure that the students have access to things outside of the classroom. It's great that they have uh that they're having that they have their teachers within the classroom, but what happens when they go outside of those doors? That responsibility is also on us as well. And I think for homeless students, we have to define or look at and make sure that we have a clear definition of what students we consider to be homeless. Many organizations have different definitions, even within Chris County. Um I know this because that was one of the populations that I worked with when I worked with the Reach Center. So we need to make sure as a district that we have a clear definition of what that is and then make sure that we have the ability to plug students into the resources that they're going to be eligible for, the students and their family. Um and same thing with our special students, that's actually one of my pillars is figuring out how we can fully fund our special needs department. That is not an area that should have to worry about.
Thank you, Jeff.
I remember my mute this time. Okay, there's um what what a uh great um package of things that we need to respond to here. With regards to English speakers and un-English speakers and and those families, um that's a unique challenge. And I like what Alyssa pointed out with regards to the parents not being able to speak English and and having the having to use translators. I think I think with 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 that, there's there's the the help that we could give them certainly through through um translation, but also through perhaps teaching them English as well and having, maybe there's a program at the local community college that we could that we could direct them towards it, or maybe they could learn with their kids, their kids could even teach them. Um have tutors would be great for this. English is a second language tutors. I was one many years ago. Um giving them the resources that they need as well. And the other part's emotional support. Is it'd be really hard to be a parent and a and a student who'd navigating English. Secondly, the foster care, I've got a niece that has foster kids. It's a very transient group. The kids have gone from family to family. There's an emotional piece there. There's a piece of encouragement and we would want to give the parents all the resources they need and all the encouragement we can to the kids. And with disabilities, again, find the funding, uh make sure that all those kids are are supported as as deeply as possible with the resources that they need. That would be all.
Thank you. Um the next question is also ninety seconds and um we will be starting with Alyssa, then Darwin, then Jeff and then David. Um Clover Park is a majority minority school district. Um it's thirty-five percent Latinx, twenty-eight percent um white, fourteen percent mixed race, twelve percent black, six percent Pacific Islander and four percent um Asian. What is your plan to ensure that all children and youth feel included and valued? Alyssa.
So the Clover Park uh school district is in the process of adopting an equity policy. Um this has, our superintendent labels it as a journey. Uh it's been a long process to get different stakeholders involved. Um the stakeholder list is broken out um and has um been brought up that the parent stakeholder group um is looks like a low percentage, but it is important to remember that other groups also include parents, so it is much higher. So it really does reach out to um a diverse group of people in the community to get their input. Um also, of course, any community member can write in with their opinions about the um proposed equity policy. We have not adopted the final draft yet. That is coming up shortly. Um it's important that we have a policy in place because we have a um such a diverse district. If they don't, if every student doesn't feel like they belong in the Clover Park School District, we're doing something wrong. They, every student should have equal opportunity at success and having an education. That's just so critical and the start of that is to have an equity policy. So we tell the community, this is what we believe, this is the path we're on. And I'm sure that it will change as we learn more and continue to grow.
Thank you, Darwin. What is your plan to ensure that all children and youth feel included and valued?
Um yeah, I think one of the the most important things is to talk to the children. Right? And that's one of the things that I actively do um in the community now. I I have the benefit of being one of those people that has been a part of this equity journey with the school board. Um and it's very, very important that they have the representation. I believe that representation matters and that's one of the reasons that I'm I'm running for school board director right now. Um the other thing is to make sure that we are including students and making sure that we're including students' families and their cultures in the education. Right? It's important that students see themselves when they're sitting inside of the classroom and that's talking about history, math, science, all of those subjects, there is ways to incorporate a student in their culture um into the subjects that we're teaching. Studies show that students perform better when they see themselves in school. So I think we have to take a look at that. Um and and for me, it's important to sit down and really evaluate that collectively. And I think the only way that we can do that as a board is if we have those diverse voices um which our board unfortunately currently does not have. Um to look at the demographics of what our board or what our school district looks like versus what our board and the makeup and the stakeholders. Um it just still does not totally reflect what our students are. And so I think we need to sit down and we really need to make sure that we have representation for every single group, um every single culture, um because it's not just a, it's not just about race. Culture and race are two very separate things. And so we need to make sure that we're including all of that.
Thank you, Jeff. You're on mute.
Um that's a really good question and I think that you're you're um you're you're hitting on a topic that might separate our opinions a bit here. Uh you know, when we talk about the equity journey, it's a it's it's an interest, it's a great word. I love the word. Um I like the word equality as well, but um from what I've been uh understanding from those who speak about the equity journey and what I've even what I've just heard recently from the other two candidates was that we tend to be putting people into categories of race and of even culture for that matter, when in fact we are one culture and one community of people working together. And I think as we as we um come to life as as people, we're not aware of those differences, you know, you we just see each other as 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 people. And it's only when we begin to be, you know, um self-focused and looking at, you know, our differences that we that we, you know, begin to ask those questions. And I think that that the approach that you take with this equity journey um tends to, I think, in my opinion, segregate rather than unify. And um and that that's, I think, a real, a real dividing way perspective and something that I would bring to this particular board, um really a cautionary approach to what that looks like. Wanting to again, treat everybody as an individual and really being very conscious of not treating people in groups.
Thank you. David. You're on mute.
Okay, so how would I ensure that all students are treated equitably regardless of color, sexual orientation, native language, country of origin or economic status? Answer, treat each individual for the individual that they are. When I became president of the Silicon River Neighborhood Association fifteen years ago, I developed a letterhead in the lower left-hand column on our letterhead is a quote by William Wilberforce, who almost single-handedly brought to end the slave trade in England in the late seventeen hundreds. He said, "Every single individual possesses skills, gifts, talents and abilities irregardless of any other factor and should be treated as the individual they are with those skills, gifts, talents and abilities and therefore have a responsibility individually to take ownership of who they are and what they became." The Elizabethan era was ushered in uh after Wilberforce completed his twenty-year campaign to end the slave trade, at which time goodness became fashionable. That mantra of treating each individual for the individual gifted person they were changed the world. We need to flip the script. The emphasis is on the wrong syllable. Labels are libel. Let's treat kids independently for who they are.
Thank you. The next question is sixty seconds. And we will be um starting with Darwin, then Jeff, then David, then Alyssa. And the sixty second question is, um given that fourteen point three percent of the students are English language learners and many more speak another language at home, what are your plans for bilingual education? And we're starting with Darwin. What are your plans for bilingual education?
Well, I think that um schools like Harrison Prep um have it are already doing that kind of the right thing, right? Students at Harrison Prep start to learn Spanish um as soon as they enter middle school, in the sixth grade, it's automatically done. Um and I think that's something that I would like to see, not just with the Spanish language, but with multiple languages across um across all our schools, starting at the middle school age. Apparently, you start to learn foreign language as a a high school requirement for graduation in high school. But I think that we should expand that opportunity um and make that accessible at a at a far, far earlier stage of life. Um that way, our students can become uh fluent in these languages, but also so that more students are feeling included um in their community and in our schools early on. Um it's very nice to see our middle school students do that. So I'd like to see us come together and figure out a curriculum that we could start in middle school. It's very similar to, like I said, one of our schools was already doing a Harrison Prep um across all of our middle schools and high schools.
Thank you, Jeff. You need to unmute, please unmute yourself.
Um I have two grandkids who are bilingual. Um they're they they speak English and they speak Portuguese and they also speak Spanish. Um they don't go to a school that that um assists them with that. Uh that's done at home and it's done with um other resources that that are associated with the family, such as extended family. But um I I don't necess, I don't believe that bilingual education is the mission, would be a mission of Clover Park School District. So um I I believe that we should support that, particularly from for those families who have bilingual roots in their families, you know, where the parents speak a language and they're they're all learning English and and if we can support that, that would be great and there's resources for that. But I don't think that we need a program to clover our school district for bilingual education.
Thank you, David.
When I was uh, one of the years when I was president of the Silicon River Neighborhood Association, um the English as a second language instructor reached out to me um asking that uh the Hispanic residents of a trailer park uh get help because uh the city had sort of noticed that they had code violations. But they couldn't speak um English and they didn't understand the police on their doorstep, nor could they read the document that was in front of them. So they reached out to the neighborhood association. So we persuaded the city to let us partner with uh rebuilding together South Sound and other building organizations. And we rebuilt all their porches with their help alongside one another. And um as a result of that, they learned to trust us and we found out a great deal about them. And that, I think, um is the bridge through the educational system. Build trust, get involved.
Thank you. Thank you, Alyssa.
Yeah, so that is one of the beauties of the Clover Park School District is um the diversity and how many languages are spoken um at home and then of course that brings into the schools as well. Um one thing that we do is we do have materials go out in different languages, so parents can um read them as students as well if English is not um a strong language at that point for them. And we need to keep expanding those materials to additional languages because we have so many, you know, of course, you start with Spanish and other languages that are um more common and a greater um majority of students and then we can need to expand out from there. I also agree that we need to start uh introducing uh different languages within the schools at a younger age. We all know that the younger you are, the more you are like a sponge. So if we could introduce that sooner, I think that um more of our students could actually become bilingual.
Thank you. Um the next question um is ninety seconds and um Lakewood has higher than average levels of domestic violence and sexual assault, higher than the national average, higher than the state. Um teachers are mandatory reporters. So the question is, what programs or policies do you propose to help teachers protect children from domestic violence and sexual assault? We'll start with Jeff, then David, then Alyssa, then Darwin. The question again, what programs or policies do you propose? The question again, what programs or policies do you propose to help teachers protect children from domestic violence and sexual assault? Jeff.
Well, thank you. That's, that's a, that's a very interesting question. Teachers are the frontline, and the teachers, you know, have so much to deal with, with just teaching the kids. And it's, it's unfortunate that we have to have them, in a sense, perform the work of a social worker, but that's the, the reality. So the first thing that I think is, is making sure that the teachers are trained to recognize, you know, what some of the, the parts and pieces are of domestic violence, how to, you know, you can certainly see bruises and things like that, but for training. And that the teachers know what resources to call upon for, for, you know, something that they would recognize. I think Child Protective Services is the first thing that I think of as a resource. There are others, you know, there's a Batters Women Shelter, you know, for the parents themselves, if you see that. But I think basically it's education, making sure that we have a system for reporting and recognizing what's going on in our schools.
Thank you. David.
We have, in our family, been have experienced domestic violence severe. And as a result of that, we've driven thousands of miles, hundreds of hours through therapy to get a measure of restoration to our lives as a family. And one of the things we discovered is that the YWCA has an outstanding domestic violence training program that frankly, if the school had its curfew, had its priorities, was able to send every single parent through, not because they're victims, but because they themselves can be peers to those who are. And it is a serious problem that we can identify. So teachers must protect those children, and that happens through relationships. I was approached by a state school board director, and she said, you know what, David, it's not about checking boxes. It's about relationship building between teachers and students. That has to be so intimate, let alone teaching material, that the two go together, and that's how you help best the students.
Thank you. Alyssa, what programs or policies do you propose to help teachers protect children from domestic violence and sexual assault?
Yes, and so we all know that reporting domestic violence can be a scary thing, and that's another item that we're putting on, that we're putting on teachers' plates, which I'm sure that, of course, want to protect all their students. You don't go into teaching without having a love for children. So we need to ensure that they have education on how to properly report things and how to safely report things to also protect themselves. And also, we need continuing education and training on what to look for. The signs, they, you know, they may not be bruises. What are the emotional and signs that you may see? You know, maybe a student is lashing out in class, different things to look for. And then we also need to ensure that counselors are available to children and feel that they have a safe space to speak about it and report. I mean, it's a very complex issue. Of course, we want to ensure that teachers feel supported and children feel supported. And I really just think that boils down to educate, education, and ensuring that there's an administration that also is a, is there supporting the teachers during the process of reporting a potential domestic violent situation or a child being abused.
Thank you.
I think that, one, we, we know our, our teachers and administrators, coaches are all mandated reporters. So they're aware of their duties to report those things. However, that doesn't take away how difficult that those things are to report, right? And so I think it's important that we make sure that our teachers are trained, not just on the learning side, but also what that process looks like for somebody on both the reporter side, somebody that's doing a recording, but also the person that has to go through that journey, being the student. Make sure that they have access to resources, immediate access, that they can, that they can be able to reach out to get the assistance that they need, either helping the student or the parent, or even for themselves. Because having to report those kind of things can be very heavy on anybody that has to do that. I think it's also important that we have trauma counselors that are on staff, that are available within the district to be able to respond to these types of things. And that goes outside of our regular counselors that are sitting inside of our schools that already have, you know, a heavy workload. It needs to be somebody that specialized in those things. I would love to see all of our staff and administration receive some form of trauma-informed care so they understand how to deal with the situation, not just as it comes, but also dealing with the students and the families as they journey through the process. Even if they're not the ones to do the reporting, but just if you see those signs or you suspect anything, right? How to handle that. And it all comes down to that training, the information, and being comfortable in that entire process.
Thank you. The next question is sixty seconds. And we will start with David, then Alyssa, then Darwin, and then Jeff. And the sixty-second question is, what specific policies would you advocate for the school board to improve its transparency? What specific policies would you advocate for the school board to improve its transparency? David.
Transparency is a major issue. The major stakeholders in the school district are their parents, and they should be the first to know, not the last to know. And they should not have to navigate a maze by which to know. So anything that has to do with their children, whether it's a curriculum that deals with sex education or equity, diversity, and inclusion, materials should be sent out directly so that parents are informed and then therefore can make an informed decision. Reaching out to people versus having people come to the school board meeting is, is light years apart. In fact, when I'm elected, I would recommend that all school board directors be required to doorbell their district that they represent to find out what the people out there actually desire your school board to do.
Thank you. Alyssa.
There are always ways to become more transparent, and I do think it's important to remember that it's a board of five. You have to have three people agree in order to make significant changes. And so it was mentioned on controversial topics like sexual education, how can you be more transparent on that? We actually knew that parents would really want to know what was being taught in the Clover Park School District once the bill was passed. So we actually created a webpage that explained exactly what we are doing in the district. And I think that it would be great to have more webpages that had similar, had a similar format. So parents were, could easily find it, easily search it. I also have said in meetings before, I, I personally think our meetings should be live streamed on YouTube. I know the city council does that. I have always been a proponent of that, but it's not a board of one.
Thank you. Darwin.
I don't think the, the first thing that we have to do to realize that our, our, our first priority is students. And so they should absolutely be the, be at the forefront of everything when it comes to any decisions or any communication that we make. But of course, that's going to go to the parents because they are the ones that, that are caring for our children. And so our transparency has to be a hundred percent. And I think what that means is owning our wins, but also owning our losses. And we have to communicate that effectively. If we do something that does not work well, right? We have to be able to explain that. I think we need to have opening listening sessions where, where our parents are invited to freely speak and where we actually give responses to our parents at those moments and in those moments. I also believe that we have to go to where the people are, right? It's not enough to just have a school board meeting and be in the meeting. We need to actually be where the district that we serve is, and we need to have those conversations. But we also need to be present in the schools where the students are, so we can be transparent, open, and have communication with them as well.
Thank you. Jeff.
Here. Transparency is a very important thing for our board. I've been on several boards, planning commissions and, and others, but mainly planning commissions, which are public boards. The most important thing on a board is to really listen, and we can get a lot of information from the staff, from the superintendent, from staff, and which is great information, but it's really from, from a particular side. And so it's important to actually make sure that there's the time, and sometimes that means scheduling more than one meeting. It's not, I know we're too many days a month, but having more meetings for people to come in and actually speak and for us to listen, and that's a transparent process. I believe too that, that with major topics such as sex education, you know, if we're talking about equity, diversity, and inclusion, even, you know, CTR is a topic that's, that's been buzzed around the area. Anything like that, that are masks in school, those should all be transparent topics that are just out there and completely clean and, and open. So I'll conclude there.
Thank you. Next question, sixty seconds. How should parents be involved in school district policy decisions? How should parents be involved in school district policy decisions? We'll start with Alyssa, then Darwin, then Jeff, and then David. Alyssa, sixty seconds.
I think it's crucial that parents are involved in giving their input for policies. As a parent myself, I, it's my responsibility to raise my child, and I want to know what is going on in the school district. I think it's a two-way street. Parents' voices need to be heard when policies are being put into place. It's not the district's responsibility to raise kids. It's a joint effort. And all the student voices, parent voices, all of it is important when making policies. It should not just be the school board. It should not be the school district. It is a two-way street.
Thank you. Darwin.
Parents should be absolutely be involved, and I think that they have to be involved by being invited to have a seat at the table. And I, I will say that I have to, for, for this equity policy, for example, I do have to commend the district on the way that I believe they handled it in having different groups and different forums and different sessions, where parents were able to sit down and voice those opinions. What I would like to see happen is that it happens more frequently. I believe that is something that needs to be a, a regular occurrence when we're talking about policies, but also the communication when we're not able to have those sessions. Because you're not going to be able to have a committee session for every single policy that has to be enacted. But we need to make sure that their involvement in those situations, that we're making them well-informed of what the process is going, or how the process is going. Again, I think that that's inviting them to the table for those info sessions, for those conversations, but also, again, making sure that we're going out to where they are and letting them know what's going on. And with my responsibility within my district, that means that it will be my obligation to go out to district three and let them know what's happening.
Thank you. Jeff.
I did it. Okay. Parent involvement. David mentioned doorbelling, and I've done a lot of that this last week or so, and have listened to different parents. And there are different opinions, really. You can get one side or another side, so it's, it's quite interesting to, to hear that. As, as a general rule, I would say that we're, you know, you can't take a vote on everything. It's not like you go out for, you have a, you know, a ballot or something like that on a particular topic. But you do need to have a sense of, of unity. And if you're coming up with like a fifty-fifty, fifty percent want this and fifty percent want that, it's probably not a go. It's probably, so my rule would be basically slow, then go. So it's, yes, we absolutely need to make sure that we're reaching out to parents, that we hear their voices, that we, that we balance what that looks like, and that we defer to a slow process rather than a, than a a hard process if, if there's a fifty-fifty split.
Thank you. David. You're on mute.
When Taj Jensen was principal of Silicon Elementary School, he asked if I, as neighborhood association president, would write a letter of recommendation for him to be nominated or selected or recommended as state elementary school principal of the year. So I told the story about Taj putting on a hazmat suit and going to a hoarder home, which was a very difficult. I was there too, and we helped her realize an environment that was far more suitable and safe. And so the principal there was, and the principal himself, reached out beyond the confines of his classrooms into the community itself. And that is an example of what as school board directors we must do. Our stakeholders, far and away, without them, we don't exist, are the parents. So.
Thank you. We've come to the last question, and we will start with Darwin, then Jeff, then David, then Alyssa. The last question is, how do you define success for a student leaving high school? How do you define success for a student leaving high school? Darwin. And this is, okay, sixty seconds, sorry. Yeah.
I love this question, because this is actually one of, of my pillars, our priorities, which is redefining what we, what we consider success within our school districts. I talk to a lot of students, and right now, the feeling is that if you don't graduate and get accepted into a four-year university, that you have not been successful. And I think that we need to look at that as in a very different way. And the way that we do that is by showing kids the different tracks and opportunities that there are after graduation. And so I define success as a student graduating from high school and having a solid plan on what they want to do next. Be that going to a technical college, be that going to some sort of vocational training, getting an internship. Maybe they want to be an entrepreneur, right? But as long as they have a plan and they have, they have step-by-step plan and goal structure to help them be successful, that's what success looks like. It's about accomplishing, graduating, which is that first accomplishment, and then working or marking out to set those goals for whatever it is next that may not look like a four-year university. And we just have to help the students figure out what that is and make sure that they have the tools to get there.
Thank you. Jeff, how do you define success for a student leaving high school?
That's a great question, and I, I put, I, I posted a blog on my website for this campaign that talked about myself. There's several of them that talk about myself, if you want to read them. But the first one was about me graduating from high school with a two-point-o average. I really involved with no sports, no arts. I mean, just basically I worked. And when I graduated, I had a, you know, just a very low, you know, average, that school district would not like me or wouldn't, wouldn't consider me a success. And it wasn't until I learned that, that actually could accomplish what I wanted to accomplish, that is, that there's actually something in me that, that, that could, could, could be something. And I learned what that was, and I subsequently went to a community college and, and got straight A's, and then, and then went on to college and became an outstanding senior. It's really funny that spark in student, if you've ignited that spark in the student, then you've been successful, regardless of whether they've, they've done something in high school or not.
Thank you. David.
My life?
Yes.
Okay, super. Thank you. Greatschools.org has an article entitled, "What Makes a District Succeed." It is subtitled, "A Closer Look at School Districts That Are Preparing Their Underserved Students for College and Beyond." Another article's headline, "Celebrating High Schools That Prepare Students to Succeed in College." And then they said this, "Preparing all students for post-secondary success, whether it is in a four-year college, community college, job training program, or the military, is both an economic and moral imperative for our country." So that, right there, is the only question and topic for every school board table discussion at every meeting is, are we accomplishing the objective by which these students are prepared for post, post-secondary challenges of life that will, that they will face? And I indicated earlier that there are specific steps And I indicated earlier that there are specific steps that great schools take by which to ensure that will happen.
Thank you. Alyssa, how do you define success for a student leaving high school?
My definition would be that each student, if they have a plan and a path forward of what they plan to do when they graduate from high school, whether it be the military, career, trade school, college, that if they're set up to go one of those paths, I would call that a success. And I should say, my definition of success has truly grown since being on the board. I grew up in a family, I knew I was going to college. That was my definition of success. Test scores needed to be good. Academics needed, you know, you needed the As and Bs. And that is still going to be some people's definition of success. That's my personal, for me, definition of success. But the Clover Park School District has implemented the four pillars of success, lifelong learner, character, leadership, collaboration, to ensure students are well-rounded and are prepared for lifelong success. That doesn't necessarily mean test scores in college.
Thank you. Now it's time for closing statements. I'm sorry, I didn't get to all the audience questions. Each candidate has up to one minute for their closing statement. We'll change the order of the opening statement. So we'll start with Jeff, then David, then Alyssa, then Darwin. 60 seconds for your closing statement. Jeff?
Okay, thank you. It's been a pleasure being here. Those are difficult questions. I really appreciate being challenged with them. As you can probably understand, it's, it's, this is not an easy job. And I applaud Alyssa for being on the board and doing what she's doing. It's a difficult one. It's, it's a, you know, it doesn't pay. It's, it's a, it's a volunteer position that requires dedication and focus. So what I propose going forward is to give you my focus. I've, I've had a long career. I still practice architecture. I've been on a lot of boards, a lot of things that allow me to navigate those things. I believe I'm a good listener and I seek to hear voices. And I seek to understand the voices and I seek to divide what might be out there and make the right choices for the Clover Park School District. And I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you. David?
The commitment I bring to the school board is the commitment I brought to the doorstep. 2,583 opportunities for me to be out in the community to hear what the people have to say. As I'm out there, the number one invariable question when I, when I ask, what is the number one characteristic of a school board that you most appreciate? It is that they would listen. So I've been doing that. And when on the board, we have just one core mission as school board directors. And that is to give every one of those children of those parents equal access to an academically excellent education. Because great schools are moral imperative, that is our only focus. So if you believe as I do, the school board director is not elected to preside over, but to pursue after excellence in education, I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Thank you. I pride myself on being respected and I will continue to bring that voice to the board. I have no political agenda. I do not believe politics belong in schools. I want to make it absolutely clear that I do not support the critical race theory. I have never voted for it and it's not being taught in the Clover Park School District. Those are the facts. Anyone who tells you otherwise is trying to manipulate your vote. They ignore the true issues of educating our children for the future. It is the board's responsibility to focus on the success of each and every student. We have a minority-majority district. It is important that we appreciate the diversity of the Clover Park School District. We need to ensure our policies and procedures serve the best interest of all our children, regardless of their background. And I would be honored to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Darwin?
Yes, I want to start by saying, I, you know, I hate that it even still has to be discussed, the CRT of not being in any of our students in the district. So to me, that's not an issue. My, my foundation and pillars for this campaign is to rebuild the relationship between the board and our community, our students, our staff and our parents. I want to redefine success for our students by showing them that there is more after, after high school than just going to a four-year college. I want to make sure that we make equity and inclusion of all of our students, the foundation of everything that they do. And that's not CRT, that is not based off of race, but that is based off of each and every individual student's needs and desires. And I want to make sure that we bring student, parents and teachers' voice to the table collaboratively. That is what we need in our school district. That is what we need in our, in our community. That's what we have to show our students and that's what we need to do to be able to make sure that our students are the most successful and receive the best education that they can. So if you believe that, I hope that I will receive your vote in this August 3rd primary, but also in our general election in Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you all. In ballot order, the candidates for district three are Alyssa Anderson Pearson, Darwin Peters II and Jeff Brown. And for district four, there are RJ Ham, Marty Schaefer and Andrea Caldwell and David G. Anderson. You should have received your ballot by now. You should be sure to vote early and no later than August 3rd. I would like to thank the candidates who participated, the timekeeper Terry Baker, the Tacoma Pierce County League of Women Voters and our community sponsors, the Affordable Housing Consortium, Black and Indigenous Organizing, Grid City Co-op, Latinx Unidos of South Sound, South Sound Neighborhood Council, South End Neighborhood Council, Sumner Waller Community Association, the Tacoma Urban League, Vibrant Schools and the YWCA of Pierce County. You can see other League of Women Voters candidate forums at our website, www.tacoma-pierce.lv.org. Read your voter's pamphlet. Look at vote411.org. That's vote411.org, where you can find answers to questions posed to all the candidates running for office. Read the candidates' websites and do everything that you can to be an educated voter. And don't forget to vote before August 3rd. Thank you everyone and have a great evening. Bye-bye.